This county board of commissioners meeting is now in session. I'm the mayor Jeff Mason, president.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Commissioner Malden, would you lead us in our opening prayer?
Shall we pray? Our almighty, high and holy heavenly Father, we joyfully bow before you as we approach your throne of grace this evening. Father, we are so thankful for all your many wonderful blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Father, and we thank you for granting us the freedoms to live in this country, this town, and this county. Father, we pray that you will be with us throughout this meeting. Father, we pray that we conduct ourselves in appropriate manners. Father, and that we seek to do your will. Father, and look to you for guidance in all things. Father, we pray that you will bless each and every one of us, Father, in the decisions that we make. Father, and help us to bring glory to your name. Christ's name we pray, amen.
If you'll join in, pledge.
Pledge and謹祝the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Stacy Nixon.
Helen Bowes.
Here.
Terry Davis.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Greta Kirby.
Charles Kent.
Here.
Ron Pascal.
Here.
Stephanie Michaela.
Here.
Scotty Barrett.
Matt Enyard.
Here.
Erica Evil.
Here.
Cordell Smith.
Here.
Danny Ozari.
Here.
Stephen Lynch.
Here.
Eddie Stout.
Here.
Casey Elrod.
Here.
Justin Malden.
Here.
Tommy Bane.
Here.
Junior Fields.
Here.
Connor McDonald.
Here.
Tim Ballard.
Here.
Danny Hough.
Here.
And Dana Rosa.
Here.
Twenty-one present, we do have a court. All right, item number five is approval of the minutes from the February thirteenth meeting. You were given a copy of those. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? I've seen none, I would take a motion to approve that set of minutes.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion approved. Matt Enyard, second. Casey Elrod. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, we'll move on to the announcements and presentations part. Tonight, we are blessed to have Ms. Katie Markman with Ag Extension here tonight to come and talk to us for a little bit. Ms. Katie is our new county director and Ag and Natural Resources newly hired for that. And she's stepping into some big shoes for Chris Hicks, but she's the person for the job. We went through some very extensive interviews and she knocked out a park and we're excited for what Ms. Katie can do. So I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Katie.
Thank you, Mayor Mason, and thank you all for having me tonight. I do have just our quarterly newsletter that I'm gonna split and see if y'all want to pass around. It's got some programs that each of our different program areas are doing right now. Chris had planned to be with us tonight, but I'm sure some of you have heard his mother-in-law passed. So if you all will keep their whole family and your thoughts and prayers. But he has done such a great job, as many of you know, serving our county. And now he is continuing with Extension and is working at the regional level. So he is still involved in Extension. He is still my boss, just at a higher level. But I am really excited and happy to get to serve as the county director and now as the Ag agent. I've been the 4H agent for the past six years, so I may be a familiar face to some of you in that capacity. But I just wanted to make sure and reach out and make sure you all knew who I was and how to get in touch with me. Because we want the Extension office to be a resource to all of our community members. If you don't know too much about Extension, we have three main program areas of agriculture and natural resources, family and consumer science, and then our 4H development program. All three in Smith County are very strong and active. We'd like to think we have something for just about everybody at the Extension office. Whether that is a full-time farmer or just a homeowner that has questions about their lawn, a senior citizen that wants to improve their health through exercise or healthy eating. And then our youth are doing some amazing, amazing things. We've had several things that have happened just since we typed up this newsletter. Our junior team that had four Forks River kiddos won our regional livestock judging contest last week. So just about anytime, we've got some impressive things going on at the Extension office. I'd encourage you guys to follow us on Facebook, if you have a Facebook, at Smith County Extension. We have a website as well that we try to keep up to date. But we just want you to know that we are here if we can do anything for you. Please tell people about us. Tell them that we are a resource in the community because we really are here to serve in all of those program areas. And if we don't know the answer, we will find the answer for you. So just wanted to take that opportunity to make sure you know who I am and how to reach us. Please review that, get in touch with us if you have questions or have something that you personally need help with or that we can help you work towards. That's what we're here for. But I really appreciate the time. Happy to answer any questions if anybody has.
Thank you, Ms. Katie. We look forward to working with you.
Have fun.
We will take our Ag Extension office care. All right, and next on the agenda is our district attorney, Mr. Jason Lawson, is here tonight. And we welcome him to come and talk to us a little bit about the cost.
The Child Advocacy Center, actually.
Oh, that's right.
A little bit different, yes. So I do have something that I'm going to pass around here that you all can take a look so you can see a little bit of information about the Child Advocacy Center. And then I will also welcome you guys about it. And I also have with me Scott Ridgeway, who is the director of the Child Advocacy Center for the fifteenth judicial district. I'll tell you a little bit about the Child Advocacy Center and talk with you a little bit about the information that you have here. And this is the topic I could talk about all night long. So how long do you want me to talk, Mayor?
Ten minutes, we good?
Ten minutes, all right. Well, I'll get on the clock here then. But I really could, and somebody, I heard the lawyer joke over there, by the way, but that's fine. The Child Advocacy Center is a cause that is near and dear to my heart. When I first joined the district attorney's office back in two thousand and two, it was not long before I found myself prosecuting cases involving child abuse and child sexual abuse. And at that point in time, we did not have a Child Advocacy Center in this district. But I remember early on in my career, I inherited a case that had been investigated in Rutherford County. And as it turned out, when they got down to it, it turned out it had actually occurred at another house right over the Wilson County line. So when that happens, that case is transferred to the county where the crime was committed. And as part of that transfer, I received evidence where they had collected through the Child Advocacy Center that had existed at that time in Rutherford County and is still there today. And I remember when I watched that first forensic interview of a young girl that had come into a Child Advocacy Center and had told what had happened to her in that case. And I knew that she had also gotten through the Child Advocacy Center services such as counseling to help her get over that and also support for the non-offending family members. I turned that evidence over to the defense and they saw the videotape of what the young girl had described. And they immediately called me and said, what does he have to plead guilty to? Because I can't have that happen in a courtroom where she takes the stand and sees that. It is a powerful visual impact when you see a child who's telling a story of something like that that happened. I saw at that point in time that a Child Advocacy Center in our district would be something that would save a number of kids from having to go through the rigors of a jury trial. And also, as those disclosures are made, we are able to help them get the treatment that they need. The purpose of a Child Advocacy Center is really a cooperative effort between a lot of different community teams. The district attorney's office is one of them. And one of the things that we see that comes through this cooperative effort is instead of this child having to tell their story again and again and again to a detective and then a prosecutor and then a DCS worker and then child protective services worker and then to a mental health counselor and all of the people that need the information in order to do their jobs, this child now through the cooperative effort is interviewed one time at the Child Advocacy Center and that interview is burned on a DS that is given to those professionals. That child is interviewed by a trained forensic interviewer. Her name is Cece Ralston that works here in our district. She has been trained because the code that we have that we work with, there's a criminal code that has some definitions that prosecutors need. There's also a different juvenile code that has definitions that are in there that are more applicable to juvenile court and the Department of Children's Services. This forensic interviewer knows those definitions and as she's going through that, she's gathering the information. She's also listing for key pieces of information like what are the next leads that we can turn over to law enforcement and detectives so that they can go interview this person or collect this piece of evidence or gather the things that we need to help prosecute. So it really has been a team effort focused on saving the child from continued trauma and then at the same time getting them the help and services that they need. The Child Advocacy Center also goes out and does adult education. They go to end services at churches and at schools and they teach people what are the red flags that you need to look for to see when child abuse might be occurring? How do you report that child abuse? It can be done anonymously. This is the phone number. If you don't know and you want a resource of should I be reporting this or not, you can call the Child Advocacy Center and someone will talk with you about that. It just provides a lot of community resources. I joined the Board of Directors there that we created in two thousand and six and I've been a board member since then. Through the process, I've seen the Child Advocacy Center grow. We've got a timeline in there. We've also got a list of our supporters so you can see who is financially funding it. We have state grants that basically pay for the salaries of our employees. So the money that we raise from groups like you, that money can go to provide services to victims. So there are things like that that we have through there. Happy to answer any questions that we have. This was such an important service that although we've had a center operating since two thousand and eight in Lebanon, with the size of my district being five counties, we were making kids and families drive all the way to Lebanon to get those services. And so it was really important to me when I opened an office here in Carthage that the Child Advocacy Center be a component of that because we want to help detectives, we want to help families, we want to help victims get what they need. And so that is what we've got there. So we've got some pictures on the last page about what it looks like at the Child Advocacy Center there in Carthage. Some of you have been through and seen a tour of our DA's office over there. We would invite you to come through there. That is definitely a part of it. I think everyone understands the child support piece that's on the first floor. They understand our criminal division that's on the second floor. They don't all understand why the Child Advocacy Center does. That's also a part of the second floor. So I'm going to answer questions that anyone has for me right now. But we're basically here to not asking for your support. A few years ago, the Wilson County government was kind enough to support us with a piece of their litigation tax. And so I understand that you all potentially have some litigation tax money that you're going to be deciding what to do with. The Child Advocacy Center would certainly appreciate any consideration for that litigation tax. The work they do there is good. The work they do there is important. The work they do there is life-changing for these victims. I can't tell you the number of them that have come up at the county fair and hugged my neck because they've come through our center and how it's changed them and helped them. So anyways, I'm just here to make that presentation and to answer any questions. And I've got Scott here. If you wanted any information from him, he can certainly answer those questions as well.
Questions, Mr. Lawson?
First, thank you for making an investment in Smith County and putting that office in here too. Because like you said, instead of everybody having to drive, and I appreciate you didn't have to do that and it's something that you did. Thank you for opening up not just the DA's office, but putting the Child Advocacy Center here too locally and making a positive contribution to our community. How many staff members do you guys have, both paid and volunteers?
Sure. So typically at the Child Advocacy Center, we have three paid staff members. That is our executive director who manages the programs and also does a lot of our community education. We have the forensic interviewer who actually interviews the child at the closed circuit television monitored interview. And then we have a child and family advocate. And that child and family advocate meets with the parents and finds out what are the deeper needs that are going on with this family? What services do we have in this district that we can pair them with? If there are issues with food, you know, they connect them with those type of service providers, other groups that we partner with that are out there. If there's issues with safety, if there's issues with whatever it may be, they try to make sure that they pair them. And they also follow up with the families to ask, how is the child doing? Does the child need additional counseling? Is this counselor working? Those sort of things. So that's our purpose of our child and family advocate. Typically, we will also have one volunteer from Cumberland University who will come in as an intern every semester. That intern will get an experience. They have to sign a confidentiality agreement as part of that. But that person will come in and work with any of the other aspects that we need now. Sometimes they do things like, we're getting ready this Saturday night to have our annual fundraiser, which is the chocolate affair that we have over at the Capitol Theater in Lebanon. So we try to raise money from the community. They work in aspects like that to help us get there. But that's your answer. We have three paid employees, mostly paid from state grants. Because of inflation and things like that, we've raised the salaries of our employees a little bit higher than what the state grants a lot for. So I'd say it's probably ninety, ninety-five percent paid by state grants. And then we have one volunteer. We also, I will say, have another volunteer who, we have a couple of people in the community who do nothing but go out and collect donations for our chocolate affair, for our silent auction and things like that. People whose hearts are there know the work that we do and they try to go out to different businesses and solicit things for the silent auction donation. Anyone else? That's easier. I'll close with this. Since we've opened the satellite Child Advocacy Center, because it's all part of the same district, we've interviewed, I believe, it was thirty-six kids since we've opened the satellite Child Advocacy Center here in Carthage at the Carthage facility. We typically interview about three hundred a year of kids that have come in and are proposed to be victims. Some of them make no disclosure, saying, nothing happened to me, this was a report that didn't. Some of those make a disclosure and we try to get counseling. Some of those make a disclosure, we're able to couple with evidence and we result in criminal prosecutions. So there's different levels of the results that come through there. But you know, I wished every kid that came through wouldn't make a disclosure. I wish they would, none of them, we would find that there's no truth to any of it. But unfortunately, these things do happen and you know, my office has had to prosecute people who have done these sort of things. And if something has happened, we want truth. We want justice for that victim. And so we would appreciate any help that you can give us. Thank you.
Thank you, General. Thank you, Scott, for working together as well. We appreciate you guys and being here and working. All right, we got that. In your package, you do have an update from the Highway Department. Mickey is here. Have any questions on that? Seeing none, we're going to, item number seven, I would, at this time, we don't have any. At this time, we will move to amendment to the agenda or approval of the agenda. We didn't have any handouts tonight, so at this time, I would take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Tom.
Second, Connor. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is set. All right, item number eight is the county mayor's report. All right, so I was supposed to give you an update on the kennel law or bring you something new by end of April meeting. The planning commission is still studying the current laws and discussing the changes. We've had a few things we've put forward, but it has been tabled. Hopefully, we'll have something for you that is passed by them and be able to vote on that by May or June. That is our hope. Something that came up in the steering committee B was about the playground. I have reached out to TDEC because if we're going to move it, we need to get permission from TDEC because that court was built with a grant. So I am waiting on them to tell me what can and can't be done with that. Those were redid in seventeen with a grant and we're asking if we can move it, so. DTC broadband ARP funds. We were able to present that shit to DTC today, the five hundred sixty thousand to finish out. It's gonna go to finish out fiber to Horseshoe Bend, Elmwood, and Turkey Creek.
Yeah.
That, yes, that's a big thing. That will, with the work of DTC, North Central, and Twin Lakes, hopefully, Chris told me today, Chris Townsend with DTC, hopefully by the end of twenty-four, we will have fiber to every, in front of every home in Smith County. And in five years, that's, we've come a long, long way. We went from not having fiber in many spots where I think North Central, the defeated area had it and nobody else did. And then North Central branched out and got into Disney Springs, Tanglewood, that area. Twin Lakes took care of the fee ridge and East Always of Putnam Canyon. And DTC's kind of filled in that gap and took care of everything else. And in last year's budget, they came and asked for that half a million dollars of our ARP money and we were, they were gonna use it for a grant match. They were not able to get a grant for Smith County. But they do have the cash capital on hand to finish that out and they are looking forward to getting started. And hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, they will be ready to roll. So that's a good thing. That was a goal I had when I first came in. And with all of us working together and having some good partners, we were able to hopefully get that done within a year and a half, so. I'm sure y'all may have had the calls, the bluff, the interchange, and the red light. I am meeting with TDOT Region Three's new director and what's, is he the, what's with, one under Jane Norris's call, I can't remember what his title is.
Director of Project Management.
Yeah, Director of Project. So those guys, I'm meeting with them this week to discuss all these issues in our state legislature. So looking forward to a good conversation. It's the first time I've met these guys in person. We had, they're through some retirements and reorganization at TDOT. We have a whole new upper management crew there. So we're looking forward to starting those conversations with those guys. Feasibility study is still being worked on for the regional steward plan. The grant program rolls out tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll have an idea of what we can expect, plan for when the grant application goes out. I hope and pray it's a lot simpler and easier than the previous water grants because we still do not have approval on that and we're six months in turning that in. So I have no idea what they're doing or what the problem is there of getting that done at State Level. We did have a highway master plan rollout last Monday. For those of you that could not attend, get with me or Mickey will be glad to kind of explain that to you and what all that showed. I talked to you about the water money still going through, the grant approval, they are behind. Budget committee meeting started about a week ago. Our next meeting is next Thursday and a lot of progress was made in that first meeting. Commissioner Chris Nixon of defeated came by today and announced to me that he is resigning. He said with his two boys playing ball and he's having two twins, or his wife's having two twins this summer, his schedule, and he just felt like he couldn't put the time and the effort into being a commissioner that he needed to be. And I thanked him for his service. I would've tried to talk to him out, but he had pretty good reasons and we'll miss Chris. So we'll get that on the agenda for the next meeting to get someone appointed there. My fault, I didn't get Stacy the info quick enough to do a, to appoint for Bill Reese's seat. So we'll do a double on the next meeting for those, both those positions. Everybody been getting either ready up texts and emails. That's been a great thing. I think that's something the state's paying for. EMS, Dr. X Crockett set all that up and it's a great communication tool to be able to get mass information out from you guys. It worked. We, our first time using it was when we had the bluff rock fall. So we put it to the test first thing and it seemed to pass all the tests. So we're glad to have that. Stacy needs six commissioners to sign a document for, sign a sales tax report for Julie tonight. So if six of you wouldn't mind seeing Stacy after meeting to sign that, would be great. And I know, I see Mr. Jordan Stillwell here with Adult Leadership. Cliff is in Leadership. Julie's in Leadership. Anybody else here from Leadership, either youth or adult? We thank you guys for being here and we're glad to have you, so. All right, so any questions for me? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the financial report. Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate if I made a motion for a special call meeting to appoint those seats?
No, that's been fine.
I'd like to make a motion to call a special call meeting on May second, seven PM, to appoint the two vacant county commission seats.
All right, I'll say that. All right. Only for that or any other business that we might have before that?
Yep.
Because that's getting down in the year. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Anything else? I will draw it and I'll make the motion, call a special call meeting to appoint those two seats and any other business you deem necessary.
All right, thank you, sir. I have a motion, a second. Second, Casey Elrod. That gets them all seated before the budget, so it's good.
Yeah, that'll be, and that's the reason I would like to do this, is to get them seated for the committee assignments and also that way we've got representation for representation from every district.
That was our main one.
For budget.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we will get you that info and get all that took care of. All right, I have a motion. A second from Casey Elrod. Do what?
Tuesday, May second, seven PM.
Tuesday, May second, seven PM, here.
Yep.
If it's favorable, we'll check that. If not, we'll do something different. All right, I have a motion, a second. Any questions, discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Malden. All right, now we'll move on to financial reports from this. You have those from Ms. Daisy. Any questions for her tonight? We'll move on. Item number nine, you have a list of committee reports. Item number ten, our presentations. It's a tax row report, that's what we need. You have a copy of that, that's what we need signed. The library's CD bed open and a water board appointment. So that's the presentations, that's for your information. All right, we will move on to item B, resolutions. Resolutions four, twenty-three oh one and oh two are budget amendments. At this time, I would take a motion to group those, or we'll pass them in.
Motion to group and approve.
Motion to group and approve.
Second.
Your motion to group and approve. I have a motion, a second. Motion to group and approve and a second.
Mayor, can you make an objecting motion?
Sure.
So I'd like to make that.
Well, we'll go for discussion. I have a motion, second. Any questions or discussions? Yes, sir.
Yes, since they are financial resolutions, I make a motion not to group them and vote on them individually and with the financial resolutions, calling for a roll call.
On one and two. We're only talking about resolutions one and two.
Okay. I thought you meant all of the.
No, no, no. Grouping, no. Grouping one and two, no.
Okay. Then I withdraw.
Okay, all right. I thought that's what you were thinking, but yeah, okay. That's why I wanted to wait and make sure we, all right. So I have a motion and a second to group resolution four twenty-three oh one and four twenty-three oh two, which are your budget amendments working inside their budget. That is the only two that you are approving. Any other questions or discussions on those two resolutions? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call, Ms. Stacy.
Helen Bowes.
Yes.
Terry Davis.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Ron Pascal.
Yes.
Stephanie Michaela.
Yes.
Scotty Barrett.
Yes.
Matt Enyard.
Yes.
Erica Evil.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Ozari.
Yes.
Stephen Lynch.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Tommy Bane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Tim Ballard.
Yes.
Danny Hough.
Yes.
Hey, Dana Rosa.
Yes.
All right, we will move on to number three. It's resolution zero four, twenty twenty-three oh three, authorizing privileged taxes on litigation. Jeremy, you want to talk about this one?
I believe this one was, came out of steering with an approval, a recommendation, positive recommendation. Essentially, we, what we, what, working together with Mr. Turner in the Circuit Clerk's office and Ms. Goode in the Clerk and Master's office, it was realized that there were some discrepancies in what we were charging in some of our litigation taxes, federal taxes and litigation. And their software companies wouldn't fix anything without a resolution in this body showing what the taxes are supposed to be. And so in looking at that, we pulled the statute and essentially what this does is it maximizes all of the potential litigation taxes that we can charge in cases that originate in those two offices. So it does two things. It gets both offices equal so that you're not, there's not, you can't go. For the example was, it costs, I think, ten dollars less to file a divorce in the Chancery Court than it did in the Circuit Court, which didn't make any sense. So it levels the fees and then it also maximizes what you can charge in filing those suits.
Thanks, sir. All right, that is resolution number three. This time I would take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Matt Enyard, second. Casey Elrod, I have a motion, second. Second, KCO Rod, I have a motion, second, any questions or discussions on this resolution?
Yes, Mayor, I have some questions. So, I understand that with this privileged tax, we're not talking about very much money here as far as, you know, how much it raises. And I understand the idea of wanting them, all the filing fees to be the same. But it just seems unnecessary to me to do it. Doesn't seem like it's something that happens. And I know it came up in subcommittee that someone was going to try to get a report showing the actual amount of revenue that that would generate for the county. I don't know if anyone has that report here tonight. I know it was mentioned in subcommittee.
I don't, I don't know who brought that up. I suppose it would have been the fact commissioner needed, I don't know, I don't know who brought that up, so.
Well, regardless, even if that report's not here, I think we can all agree that it's not going to be anything considerable for the county as far as generating revenue. Therefore, I just think that it's not something that needs to be done.
Oh, and I will say, what I can tell you is that what, we were, we were not charging one of the $25 fees, and then the other $25 fee was being charged. That was where the discrepancy was, so one office was at 15 and one is at 25. So, and this would increase the overall filing of a matter. In one office, it will increase at $25, and the other also increase at $35. So, that's your total, just to tell you what your total change is. It's not, we're not implementing $60 here, we're implementing 25 and 35.
Okay, but just for the record, because it seems like with the way that you explained it, so really, the way that you're explaining it is making it sound like this is something that we should be doing per statute, but we weren't able to charge it before because of the software issue. But per statute, that's.
We're allowed to.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's a discretion of the legislative body, of the county body.
But this isn't something that we have to do.
Here's the thing, guys. There's going to be filings, there's going to have to be, we got to pay people to file it, we got to pay for the security staff, we got to pay for the jail. As these things are getting done, this money is going right back into those things. This money can only be used for that purpose. We can't pull the money, this tax can't be pulled and used elsewhere in the county. It can only go to the security staff, it can only go to the jail, it can only go to the courthouse for the operation of it. We're going to have, continue to have expenses. This is just another, this is a revenue stream to help offset that expense, and it can be a revenue stream. When we're looking down the line of property tax, that it could be a potential offset to that as well because it's going to be more money coming in. So, we're just charging a tax to those people who are utilizing those services and paying, you know, paying for those services.
Any other questions or discussions?
I'll say, as an attorney, it's frustrating enough to have to deal with the different cost and fees just county by county and the fact that there's different fees even within the county. It would just be much smoother and easier on law firms and things like that if you've got a set fee that applies to everything within the county that's the same across the boards. So, I mean, it's kind of a no brainer in my opinion considering we're just talking about $10.
Also, it helps since a portion of that will go to the child advocacy center that has been.
Not this one. That's it, that's the next one.
Any other questions? Did you want to make a motion to amend this motion and not do this, or did you just?
Just wanted to, you know, have that discussion on it. But we can, we can take the vote.
This, this one, any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, this has to pass with a two-thirds majority, so we will roll call. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, roll call, Stacy.
Helen Rose?
Yes.
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Ron Pascal?
Yes.
Stephanie Michaela?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Inyer?
Yes.
Erica Abel?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Ozari?
No.
Stephen Leach?
Yes.
Betty Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Tim Keller?
Yes.
Danny Hug?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Motion passed. Alright, item number four is a, is resolution 42304, and it levies a victim assistance assessment litigation tax in Smith County, repealing and replacing resolution 072010. And I understand that was the one that set up the first time this victim assistance fund, and it went to CASA. CASA is no longer, they pulled out, they're no longer here, they don't have, they didn't have the staff and volunteers to do it. So, they were actually in an office in the turnabout, but they vacated that office. And so, this is a tax that is taxed, but it right now doesn't have a place to go. And what this would do is send this money to the Lawson Child Advocacy.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we're already doing this, it's just currently appropriated to CASA. This resolution would switch it from CASA to Child Advocacy.
Motion approved. Motion approved, Junior Field, second, Tim Keller. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? How much money we talking on this one? It varies.
It varies. I can't be as little as $700 in a quarter, and I can't be as much as $4,000 per quarter. It all is depending on how many of those cases come through that charge that litigation tax.
Just for regular time.
How much was in the leftover in that fund for CASA that'll be transferred over?
That's something that I've got to speak with Mr. Hasbro about, how to handle the funds that are within the timeframe from when CASA pulled out and when the inactive thing is done. I'm not quite sure, so I haven't answered that question yet.
What's the balance of that?
It would be very safe to say we're probably not talking about over $5,000 there. We had a real small amount during COVID wind, the court system was, you know, kind of suppressed and not having session as much. So, I guess I can give you a total on that as far as that goes, but I will be getting my Mr. Hasbro's.
Could that just be added to the motion to send those funds?
The question we've got is, the resolution is in place right now, directing it to CASA up until today if you change it. So, the question is, can you retroactively do that? And that's, that's what we're, what we're trying to figure out. What we're doing right now is making sure from today forward, we're going, we're taking, you know, you're going to move to CASA. We're still.
So, can we put in, in the motion that if legally we can do that, did it just transfer us to that? Or do we need to wait until we find out for sure and then come up with an amendment?
But after today, if you vote yes on this night, everything after today will go to Child Advocacy. The balance we've figured out. And on to CASA is no longer so. If legally possible, the movement of money won't be a problem.
We'll get an answer for it.
Alright, any other questions or discussion on this, this resolution? Alright, so taking deals of money, seeing who will call it, Miss Stacy.
Helen Rose?
Yes.
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Ron Pascal?
Yes.
Stephanie Michaela?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Inyer?
Yes.
Erica Abel?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Ozari?
Yes.
Stephen Leach?
Yes.
Betty Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Tim Keller?
Yes.
Danny Hug?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Alright, item number five, resolution 042305, authorizes Smith County to join the state of Tennessee and other local governments in amending the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Baiting Agreement and approving the related settlement agreement. This is just another round of the opioid settlement money that's coming our way. We have a resolution to pass, to send in, to be able to get our portion of that. I've signed several documents already on this, so we should start getting the money as soon as we get this put into that. At this time, I would take.
Motion to approve.
Most approved, Tommy?
Second.
Second, Junior Field, I have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussions?
Don't know how much it is.
No, don't have a clue on this one yet. It's just, and a lot of times we don't know, though there's a deposit in the bank, and then we're scrambling trying to figure out where it came from, and then we trade it out. Any other questions or discussions? Alright, seeing none, we will take this money, we will do a roll call, please, Stacy.
Helen Rose?
Yes.
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Ron Pascal?
Yes.
Stephanie Michaela? Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Inyer?
Yes.
Erica Abel?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Ozari?
Yes.
Stephen Leach?
Yes.
Betty Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Tim Keller?
Yes.
Danny Hug?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
Alright, item number six, resolution 42306 is amending the resolution 09200821 regarding Smith County Beer Board Regulations.
Motion to reject amendment 042306.
Second.
And that was a motion to reject.
Motion to reject this change. I have a motion and a second to reject this resolution. So, yes, vote is to remove the.
Keep your current, keep the current restrictions.
Now, explain that again, a yes vote is what?
Keeps it the same.
Keeps it the same. A yes keeps it the same, a no changes, or goes to, a no, then we will vote on the resolution. If a no is carried away, then we will vote on the resolution. The yes is carried, then there's no change. Alright, item number six, any questions or discussions on, or need a second on that? I do have a second.
I will say from steering committee B, this was a negative recommendation from our committee.
I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution as it's stated in there, where it has the zero distance and the 750 distance. I'd like to make a motion to amend that to 100 feet and 800 respectively.
I think, I think you need to vote on the original.
Vote on the original. Okay, that's what I was, I was thinking, we need to vote on the original, so. And then we can come back and take that, correct?
Yeah, unless he wants to amend his, his original motion, but I think it's so different.
Alright, so we'll hold that, we'll come back to that. Alright, so again, you are going to vote yes to keep the current regulations and no to change the original resolution.
Then I would like to test the discussion.
Do what?
I would like to test the discussion.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, yes, this did have a negative recommendation from steering committee. It was also not a runaway vote either. There were some thoughts on both sides to this. This is coming about because there is a business owner in the county that would like to sell beer in his convenience store, would also like to put in gas pumps, but cannot justify the expense without that. It is not only about that business owner either. There are several other business owners in the county that are also affected by this rule. The, as it stands right now, the ordinance is 2,000 feet. Yes. School or gathering place. And then what about the residence is?
300.
300, okay.
And what did that 300 feet, the resident must not object to that?
Exactly. So, he has brought it, one specific business owner has brought it forth several times. It has been rejected because there has been objections from the residence owner. To me, it is a, it seems to me that it is a unnecessarily, an undue burden on a business. 2,000 feet is a little bit much. 300 feet can be a bit, that can be argued that that's a bit much too. I understand the objections of a, an owner of a residence to not have a means of countering, but there is that process in place with the beer board as well. I think 100 feet gives you a little bit of space. I think 2,000 feet is an insane distance. To me, it is a, you are imposing morality on law. And you cannot legislate morality into people. It is selling alcohol, or selling liquor, not even liquor, selling beer for off-premise consumption. If Walmart can do it, I don't understand why he can't do it. I don't understand why a business can't do that. A local small business that's trying to invest in the community.
How's, how's the distance measured? Building to building or from front door to front door?
Closest to points of buildings.
Are we at the state maximum right now?
Yes.
Somewhere above.
Have we been able to find out what it was prior to, we've raised it in the last however many years?
We implemented it.
When the state allowed you to, we implemented it.
Or, we were operating, from my understanding, obviously, I wasn't in this position then, but from my understanding, we were operating at those, at what the state allowed. But in 2008, they actually passed a resolution to officially adopt those requirements. I can't find any evidence that we were necessarily doing something different before 2008. I just know it became an official resolution in 2008.
And there was a question posed about if you made the requirements more, is that in conflict with?
What do you mean?
Like, if it was at 1.300 feet and then we made it 500 feet, is that, are we allowed to do that? Are we allowed to make harsher requirements?
As long as we have an issued permit.
Well, not if there's anyone who would then be in violation. You can't, you can't unadversably apply.
You can't implement a law that would put somebody that is currently within that law in violation of that law.
For reference, guys, I've reached out to every surrounding county because I was curious how we compared to everybody. So, I spoke with every single county that surrounded us. Putnam County, 300 feet, 2,000 feet. DeKalb County is 300 feet on residential, they're 800 feet on places of public gathering. Macon County, 300 feet residential, 2,000 feet on places of public gathering. Jackson County, 300 feet residential, 500 feet on places of public gathering. Wilson County is the only county around us that does not have any sort of residence statute. They were zero, and they were 1,000 on places of public gathering. Hart School, Trossock County, it's a little bit different, they're a Class B county because they are metro, so they're really not a good comparison to us because of the way that they are municipality and county kind of meshed together. And it's really vaguely worded, you cannot have a beer permit issued in a predominantly residential district. That's the attorney speak for you, they are the lawyer speak. Or 500 feet of a place of public gathering. But then there's also some other things in there that's supposed to be next to a sidewalk abatement and other things like that too. So, we can get really funky with Trossock County. Point being, with the exception of Wilson County, there is a residential requirement for all of our surrounding counties of some sort. And to me, that is very, very important. Because we, while, for this particular business we're talking about, we're talking about off-premise consumption. But if we make this rule change, it's not just for off-premise consumption. A beer permit can be issued for on-premise consumption, off-premise consumption, both, or the manufacture of alcohol. And while we do not allow liquor sales in the county, if we pass these distance rules, they will have to be the same for liquor as well. We can only have one set of distance rules for any type of alcohol being sold in the county. That means if we lower these distance rules, anybody can open up a bar, anybody can open up a beer joint out in the county anywhere that they want to, and based off the way the resolution is worded with zero feet, no resident in this county can say anything. An objection will not mean anything. They may be notified, they may know it's coming, but they won't have a say so in it. I understand we're talking about a single business, and I know that there is the potential, we may have a motion to lower the distance rule to 100 feet. If I'm, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but 100 feet for that one particular business that is, that this is for will not help that business, that will still be in violation even if we lower it to 100 feet for residential dwelling. So, lowering it to 100 feet is not going to affect anything even if we do that.
But we're not just talking about one business, we're talking about countywide.
Exactly, that's exactly right. We're talking about the entire county, not just one single. We're talking about the entire county, not just one single, single place. And I have a problem removing every resident's right to speak and have an opinion on whether there's going to be sales literally next door to them. They could be within arms' reach of that property line, and they would not be able to say anything.
And that's why I made the motion to...
Yeah, I agree. And also, we can talk about... I've heard legislating morality. Guys, we're the county legislative body, that's what we do. We've decided, we are making judgments based off of what we think is right and what we think is best for this county. It's what every single one of us is doing. We're doing it in our own way, but that's what every single one of us is doing, and that's what we're elected to do. I can tell you this, every single constituent that I spoke to, once they understood the full breadth of it, because again, this is not just for off-premise consumption. Once every constituent I spoke with understood the full breadth of what this change will do and what this change will cause, I have exactly zero people who support changing this. I have letters from people who do not support it. I even had one individual that asked if we could increase them. They wanted to go even further than what the current was. So, me, not just me personally, but my constituents and everyone I talked to are opposed to this change, and that's why I can't support it. And that's why I voted because it had the negative recommendation coming out of committee. I think it's appropriate to say reject it because it came with a negative recommendation. And from everybody that I spoke to, nobody supports this change.
I just want to make a couple of points, and I'll try to be brief, which you probably give me the same comment that you gave General Lawson. But specifically looking at the legal impact, it's already been touched on, but this is... We know that this comes out of an issue with one convenience store in the county, but this resolution is incredibly broad and impacts every current and potential business in the county area of Smith County. I've spoken to attorneys both locally with Jeremy and at the state and reviewed the statute. And the law is very clear that you cannot treat different beer permits differently. You can't treat on-premise consumption differently from off-premise consumption. And this resolution changes the distance rules for all of those permits. So, the example was already given, you know, what does that mean? That means in... Under this resolution, in Moore Subdivision or in my district, River Point Subdivision, you know, somebody can go in there and if we had liquor by the drink in the county, open up a bar in the middle of one of those subdivisions, and no property owner would have any right or any ability to object and keep that from happening. And then you'd just be praying to the zoning planning commission that they wouldn't let them get in there. If they got in there and just went, I know we've had issues with making sure zoning is enforced, you know, then the property owners have no way to stop it. And the important part is that the Beer Board has no discretion. They can't say, "Well, you know, I know it meets the statutory requirements, but I don't think it should go in this neighborhood." They... If they did that, they would get sued the second they said that because the statute requires them to issue the permits if they meet the requirements. And that's just a dangerous precedent to set because the case law is also clear, once you issue a permit, you basically can never take it away. So, say we get caught in the catch-22 where, you know, we changed these distance requirements, somebody gets a permit real quick, and then we realize, "Oh, no, we shouldn't have done this." There's backlash from the community, things like that. We can't take that permit away, and there's some very strong case law that says we wouldn't be able to change the distance requirement back once somebody's already gotten a permit within that distance. So, it's a very dangerous, very broad resolution, which I don't think is good for Smith County, and which is why I encourage everyone to vote in favor of the motion to reject it.
I just want to address two points. In terms of a bar being able to just be placed in the middle of a neighborhood, you couldn't just go put a bar in the middle of Cumberland Cove. There are zoning restrictions. You would have to be a business. So, no, I can't just open up a bar in my home. In terms of morality versus legality, we're talking about grown adults, 21 and up. And so, if we're talking about morality, what you're arguing is whether grown adults should be able to do something or whether you think that it... Whether you think alcohol is evil. It's not... It is legal, whether you believe it's evil or not. What your personal preferences are, what your morals are. We're here to be a legislative body, and we're talking about morality. We're talking about legality here, not morality.
At the time that this business was purchased, was it known publicly that a beer license would never be issued to this place? Or does anybody know?
The regulations were the same.
The regulations were the same, so to say that it was any different, I don't know.
So, when the store was purchased, this was in effect?
Yes.
And now, we want to change it?
Great, that's what the motion says. Yes, Mr. Gibbons?
The... What was talked about in the committee meetings was basically packaged beer. There never was, and this was a question for the attorney. Is this for... By the drink as well, changes with this being changed? Or is it just for the sale of beer? Because that's two different things, because that was not discussed in that meeting.
Right.
It was by packaged beer, it was not discussed by liquor by the drink.
Yeah, that question did not come out in committee.
I don't think... I don't... Sorry. I don't think any of us realized it.
This is a question for the attorney.
That question... That question had come out in committee, but... But, yes, distance requirements cannot be...
You can't separate them.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's what wasn't talked in the committee meetings.
Right, if liquor by the drink were established in the county, then you... From my understanding of the statute, case law, and Attorney General's opinions, you could not have separate distance requirements for the different kinds of permits. So, whatever change you make here would potentially be across the board, whatever may come.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir.
I don't think we're trying to leave it just like morale and anything like that. I think we're really trying to maybe protect some of our churches and some of our young people. And of course, older people, too, they don't necessarily be around. But I don't know how long some of them lived here, but back when I was a little boy, there were beer joints everywhere here. Hollywood, Golden Nugget, Ma Bakers. Anybody remember the bloody bucket up here? Okay, it got that name for a reason because there were shootings and stabbings there all the time. And no one saw anything. And, you know, there's a lot of homes nearby right there. Anyway, I feel sorry for anyone's business, it hurts it, but I think we should leave it just like it is. Because we're here to try to help protect the citizens of this county and to protect our children and to protect our young people that are in school, and we're trying to raise them right. There's just so much stuff goes on now, just in Paris. I don't understand. I wasn't raised that way. Although, there was a world of junk here a long time ago, it was dyed out, it was closed down. But anyway, that's how I feel. I want to protect our people. Nothing against alcohol if you want to sell it, that's great. That's your business, as long as it's within bounds, within rules, you go by the permits and what's in the law says. That's all I have to say.
Any other questions?
If I understand this correctly, anybody can open up a package store across many of our schools. Now, I've got grandchildren in the schools here, so I don't want the potential for somebody... They'll come out of school, somebody riding the school, somebody drunk. It just opens the door and it does not need to be opened. This... I mean, I'm a grandparent, I'm a parent. It's my job to protect my children and my grandchildren, and that's a part of it. It may not be popular. A lot of times, you're right there in popular. So, and as far as legislating morality, you can legislate laws regarding right and wrong. The morality part comes from a person's heart. You can't make somebody follow the rules. But they are there and are to be enforced. So, I agree, Mr. Moll, leave it alone.
Any other questions? If not, we will...
Just so we're clear, can you recap the way this is going?
All right, so what we did is Mr. Malden made a motion to reject Resolution 0422306, meaning that resolution goes away and no change will be enacted. So, and then that's what you're voting on. You will vote yes to reject that resolution and keep our laws the same as they are right now. A no is saying you want to vote on Resolution Number Six. Is that correct? All right, any other questions or discussions? Clint?
Our question, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Keep counting, you can count. All right, seeing no other questions or discussions, roll call, Stacy.
Helen Bose?
Yes.
Kerry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Ron Pascal?
Yes.
Stephanie Michaela?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Enyard?
Yes.
Erica Evil?
No.
Cordell Smian?
Yes.
Danny Ozawa?
Yes.
Stephen Leish?
Yes.
Betty Stow?
Yes.
Casey Elrod?
No.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Tim Ballard?
Yes.
Danny Hough?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
All right, that passes 20 to 2, so Resolution 042306 gets stripped from the record and you no longer have that. Ms. Erica wanted to make a motion to change that.
I don't think I can if it's on, right?
Yeah, it's part of measuring inquiries, I don't think she can.
You wouldn't be voting... You wouldn't be calling to another vote of the exact same resolution.
Wouldn't be making a different resolution?
You would be... From what I'm understanding, you're wanting to propose different...
Making a motion to propose a resolution of changes?
You would be putting forward your own resolution essentially, changing your distance numbers, whatever you were wanting to do. That vote was to reject what was on the table. So, you're not reviving this. You're essentially putting forward something different.
I would put forward a motion with different parameters.
Right.
I would like to put forth a motion or resolution with the parameters of 100 feet for personal residents and 800 feet for gathering places.
Do you agree with that, Mr. Moll? Are we on? Okay, I know that, I just... I want to make double sure. Yes, all right, so Ms. Evil made a motion to change our current beer permit regulations from 300 foot to 100 foot in residential and 2,000 foot, from 2,000 foot to 800 foot on places of public gathering. Do I have a second? Is that clear? Second. I have a motion and a second. 100 and... I have a motion and a second to change that. Any questions or discussion on this motion?
I still think it's real unclear as far as the package and liquor by the drink because those two are so different. Me personally, packaged beer, not an issue, go to Walmart, wherever. But if you can change it where any place that has a beer permit can open a bar of, that's different.
Or some son of a liquor that way.
Liquor by the drink is not legal outside of the city, any city in this town.
It would have to be brought forward and voted.
You'd have to vote on that, right?
Yeah, but it could come one day.
Anything could happen, a public could hit this place or not.
I know, but I'm just saying.
It's like a habit, you can drive, sit in it, but then when I'm driving...
Mr. Mayor, it's really not fair to mention Walmart because there's nothing... There's not a church or gathering place within 2,000 feet of Walmart.
What about the Sico that's right by the middle school?
Yeah, with that, a stone's throw from the middle school. That's in the city.
That was grandfathered in and all of a sudden.
We're talking about saving our children.
This county or didn't. Popular market.
We can't change the city, we can only change the school.
The teachers was spared before the middle school was... Even the Board of Education wasn't named for it.
Mayor, speaking about what Terry said, on C-Taxis website, they've got an Attorney General opinion, Attorney General Opinion 02-092. The Attorney General has opined that a county cannot enact different distance rules in different areas of the county, and they cannot apply different... On-premise and off-premise cannot be different.
Just very briefly, the kind of the problems that Commissioner Leish was mentioning, if we did go to 100 feet and then the county adopted liquor by the drink, we cannot go back to 300 if there's already been a permit issued that was 100 feet.
Even 300 years from now.
Yeah, we could never go back because once you have a permit that's been issued, you can't go back and keep other people from getting that same kind of permit. So, that's the problem with talking about liquor by the drink, things like that, is that, no, it's not an issue right now, but once we make this change and a permit is issued, we're done. We can never address it again.
Can't put the toothpaste back in the tube.
All right, any other questions or discussions?
A yes is agreed?
Yes is... Yes is agreeing on the resolution. Yeah, you're flipping this again. Yes means you're voting to change the current laws to from 300 foot to 100 foot and 2,000 foot to 800 foot. No means you are voting to stay. The second. Is that clear to everybody? Make sense? All right, clear. Any other questions or discussions? We will roll call vote this. Seeing no questions or discussions, roll call, please, Ms. Stacy.
Helen Bose? Kerry Gibbons?
No.
Billy Bass?
No.
Greta Kirby?
No.
Charles Kent?
No.
Ron Pascal?
No.
Stephanie Michaela?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
No.
Matt Enyard?
No.
Erica Evil?
Yes.
Cordell Smian?
No.
Danny Ozawa?
No.
Stephen Leish?
No.
Betty Stow?
No.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
No.
Tommy Vane?
No.
Junior Fields?
No.
Connor McDonald?
No.
Tim Ballard?
No.
Danny Hough?
No.
Ed De La Rosa?
All right, that motion... That resolution fails by a vote of 18 to 4. Any other resolutions or motions on that? Would not be rejected. All right, seeing no other movement on that, we'll move to out of number 6, the list of notaries we have before you. At this time, I will take a motion to approve that. Please. Motion. Second. Second. I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second for this notary. Any questions or discussions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Kerry. All right, out of number 11 for the business, any other business needs to come forward tonight? All right, seeing none, out of number 12, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion. Connor taking a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You are adjourned. Thank you for your attention.